Buddy, hello, Councilor Byers, hello, Councilor Pestejo.
Hi, Jordan, how are you doing?
I'm doing good. I got a little sunshine walk in, so I'm feeling extra vibe.
Good.
Hello, Councilor Pernarath.
Hello.
Hey, Eleanor.
Hannah, have not seen you for a while.
I know.
In person.
I know. I get to see Dave when I'm out walking my dogs. It's a bonus. I don't get to see you when I'm walking my dogs though, Eleanor.
I'll have to start hanging out.
Yeah.
I have to get a dog.
If you wouldn't mind hanging out on the corner of Talent Ave and Creel, that would be amazing.
You know, I have been known to do that with my clipboard. And what do you think?
Dude, I gotta tell you, Councilor Pernarath, I attended the SOU presentation on the COVID survey that they performed for us. You did a really great job of getting, getting folks out there, speaking of being out there with your clipboard, getting more sign up.
Yeah, I can't take credit. I didn't actually do that. That was a.
Well, you killed the right people.
Yeah, I mean, I tried to spread the word, but I didn't actually make it out there with the clipboard for that one.
Well, great. We still got great representation, so.
Okay.
You know, vibes you put out there were good.
I'll get take credit for the vibes, absolutely. Was that SOU thing last night? Was that their class or?
It was their, their final meeting. So they were presenting the results. We did film it, so I'll be able to share a link with you all as well as the summary report.
Awesome. Well, that's great. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah. It was, it's a cool program. Brad, I should tell you about that program. They're always looking for new projects to do if you ever have the need for surveying. All right, let's check here. We're waiting on, it looks like. A couple more folks, so we'll hang tight for a bit.
Thank you for that, Jordan. I'll, I'll take you up on it.
Everyone always loves a good survey.
Yes.
Jordan, are you able to hear me okay this evening?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Kim, are you prepared to share your own slides or do you want me to drive for you today? Oh, I do think you're on mute.
I'd be happy to share.
Perfect.
Move myself out of the sunbeam if I can.
And Jordan, I, I just noticed among the attendees Francesa Young from Rogue River Keeper. And I think she was one of the presentees, presenters for Jeff Golden's Water. Forum, which I thought was super educational. I really appreciated. I'd say thanks for that, Frances.
All right, we'll give it just about one more minute here and then, Councilor Pernarath, I might ask you just to get us started tonight. Since we got our council meeting afterwards.
Sending a quick text to the mayor. Sorry, I'm late.
No problem. Welcome in, Mayor.
Okay, is everybody here? So let's go ahead and call this study session of March 16th to order. Roll call, please.
Look, Clark. Councilor Pernarath.
Here.
Councilor Greider.
Here.
Councilor Pestejo.
Here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Parton Miller.
Yeah.
And Mayor Ayers Flood.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, so. Do you guys have the agenda on the screen?
I don't currently have this one up, but I can let you know that the agenda tonight is going to be meeting accessibility. And then we'll dive into the presentation, hearing strategy, time for questions, and then we'll adjourn.
All right, so with that, item number two is meeting accessibility. Hector.
This is a question for the public. If any attendees in this meeting translate into Spanish, please raise your hand now. And in Spanish, it would be. And I'll watch the attendees, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Jordan, with that, I'll go ahead and hand the study session over to you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I want to give a, a big thank you to Kim Grigsby with JSI Water and Brad Taylor with the Medford Water Commission. They're with us tonight to walk us through a project that the partner cities who all use Medford Water Commission water have been working through. Writing water rights. And how to address some sharing issues or at least some certification issues that are currently occurring at the Duff Water Treatment Plant. So with that, Kim, I will hand it off to you and Brad. To get the party started.
Yeah, Jordan, it looks like my ability to share my screen has been disabled. So if you're able to share or if that can be changed, so I can share, we'll get going.
Perfect. Hector will take care of that. And before I hand it off, I actually want to share with Council tonight. Coming before you all, likely in late April, early May, will be the draft IGA agreement. That Brad and Kim will lay out the high level objectives of tonight, and then we'll dive into the details when it comes all before you. So that's what this study session is really, is the next step in that process to make sure you all are fully aware and understanding of the purpose of the IGA and what's inside of it before Council makes their decision. So thank you.
Hannah, I'm gonna go offline. I'm gonna turn my camera off, just, just to let you know.
Perfect. And Kim and Brad, we tend to see the study sessions during dinnertime, right, for regular council meetings. We encourage folks to eat dinner and. All that, so don't be turned off by cameras off if they are, go off.
No problem at all. Are you seeing my screen now, Jordan? The title screen?
I am.
Okay. Terrific. So. Thank you for inviting us to be with you again tonight. Looking forward to talking to you about the water rate strategy that is being developed by the partner cities and Medford Water. And this is gonna kind of build on what we talked about last time, which was in January, when we talked about water rates and more specifically the city's water rates. So let's jump into it. If I can get this slide to move forward. There we go. Okay. So, just to remind you about the city's water rates and water use, make sure we're all on the same page. The city joined Medford Water Commission back in the 1990s. And at that time, the city got a water rate to meet its peak season demands, which is this May through September time period that we're going to be focusing on. That water rate authorized the use of up to 1,292 acre feet of stored water from Lost Creek Reservoir. The water is to be diverted at the Duff Water Treatment Plant on the Rogue River and treated. And then transported to the city for use. So right now, that water rate has been partially certificated. So the city has used 533 acre feet out of that total and has a water rate certificate for that, that volume. The remaining 759 acre feet is still in permit status. It hasn't been used yet. And as I think we talked about last time, the goal is always to get your water rates to the certificate stage. At that point, you're very secure. You don't have to go back to the Water Resources Department and ask for anything. You're, you're good to go, and that's, that's where you want to be. So eventually, when the city is able to show use of the 533 acre feet. Plus the additional 759 acre feet, then you'll be able to fully certificate that water. Okay. Um. The city has a treat and transport agreement with the Medford Water Commission, which is for delivery of that water during that May through September time period. And then during the rest of the year, the, the October through April time period. Then Medford Water Commission delivers wire to the city under its own water rates during that time period. Okay. Any, any questions so far?
Oops, sorry. Councilor Byers.
Uh, thank you. When you say we've used 533 acre feet, is that. At like, what is the quantifiable amount of time in which that's been used or?
Oh, yeah, good question. Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry I wasn't more clear about that. So that is the annual volume of use. So there's, there's a water year. Because, you know, why start January one if you can make it more complex? It runs from the beginning of October through the end of September. That's the water year. And it's the quantity, the maximum quantity that has been used during a calendar year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good question. Anything else before we start talking about the, the project? Okay. So, um, there were really a couple of things that. Prompted the cities and Medford Water Commission to start having these discussions. But the first one was the need to be very strategic about certificating the water rates at the Duff Water Treatment Plant. Because in addition to the city of Talents water rates, there are another 18 water rates. Kind of piled up at the Duff Water Treatment Plant. We've taken to calling it a traffic jam. Just because there's so many water rates there, and they're held by the six partner cities as well as Medford Water Commission. And as we talked about last time. Um, there is the opportunity to end up getting water rates tied together and, and leaving water on the table, as we say. If you're not strategic about certificating water rates, when the capacity of the water rates, the, the rate authorized by the water rates. Exceeds the water treatments, the water treatment plant's capacity to process that water. Because the, the ability to get a water rate is very closely tied to of the capacity of a water treatment plant. We'll dive into that a little bit deeper here in a minute, but. Having that, that issue in front of them was really the kind of a key driver. In getting this group together and getting them talking about the need to be closely coordinated when they're sharing the water treatment. Yes, there's a question.
Yeah, thanks. This might be jumping ahead, but I, I'm just trying to remember from the last time. Does seniority of water rights have any bearing prior to certification? Or is that just upon certification? Or are you gonna, you're probably about to talk about that.
No, no, I'm, I'm happy to answer that now. Um, really, the. The, the key reason why priority is important in Oregon is when it comes to regulation of water rates. So if there's not enough water from a particular source. Then the most senior water rates get their water first, and the junior water rates. May not get any water at all. So that's really the key part of. Priority, and it applies equally to permits and certificates. Does that make sense?
I, I guess just. I'm sorry, I was distracted for a second. Did you say that, that as far as seniority, though, it, does it have to be certificated to count towards seniority? I'm just wondering when, when that date is.
Oh, I see what you're asking. Um, the, the priority date is the date that you applied for the water rate. So your priority date, your, your seniority is established when your application goes in the door. So it's not tied to when you get your certificate.
So I guess the, the follow-up then is, is hopefully it'll be spelled out, talent, seniority. As far as our water rights go compared to the other cities, just for understanding.
Yeah, so when Jordan asked me this question, I looked at the partner cities' water rates that use, all use water from Lost Creek Reservoir. And you're kind of in the middle. There's some water rates held by partner cities from the reservoir that are, are more senior, and there's some that are more junior.
Councilor Pernarath, I'm happy to share. Is I'll go ahead and send an email out to Council with the water right chart that Kim provided to me. It's pretty technical looking, but I'll pass that along in case anyone wants to do a deep dive.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's another question. Please go on.
Um, it's me, Mayor Darby. So I realize that this is probably not the, the main focus of this discussion, and I probably should have asked about these in the study session. But when you say avoid leaving water on the table, do you mean avoid leaving water on the table? I mean, I think our, our deadline is in 2065 to perfect our water rights. So is it leaving water on the table after 2065? Or if not, if it's before them, what does that mean exactly?
Yeah, um. It's always probably a bad idea to use these slang terms, so I apologize for that. Um. You, you may recall during our last conversation, I provided a, a very simple example of. A couple of water rates at a water treatment plant. And, um, it was how I, I tried to describe this concept, so I'll, I'll try to do it without the, the graphic. If you have, for example, a one CFS water rate. And a five CFS water rate, both at a water treatment plant that has a capacity of five CFS. And, um, the one CFS water rate gets a certificate. Then. The holder of the five CFS water rate could go in to the Water Resources Department and request a certificate also. And the Water Resources Department would give them a certificate too, because there's enough capacity to use all five CFS. Under their water rate at the water treatment. However, what could happen is the Water Resources Department could say, here's your certificate for five CFS. But your use of water in combination with the one CFS water rate. Can only be used to divert a total of five CFS. So even though the rights added up to six CFS. And. Water rate certificates were issued for both. They can only be used to divert five CFS instead of six, and that would hold true. Even if the water treatment plant capacity was increased to 10 CFS. It would still be limited, use under the two certificates would, could still be limited to five CFS. And that's what we mean by leaving water on the table. It's when you're not careful about how you get certificates. In relationship to the capacity of the water treatment plant. Does that help?
It does.
Okay.
And then my one more question is, will there be, at some point in this presentation, will there be? Um, so we've, it looks like we perfected about 40% of our water rights and off cut, off the cuff math. Will there be, will we ever know what the other cities, you know, have and what they have perfected and what they haven't perfected?
Yes, um, there is a table that's been developed that shows. Which cities have certificates to fully develop their rights and which are still in permit or transfer status. That's coming up in a presentation, kind of a, I've, I've lumped them all together to not be overwhelming. So I'll show you that in a little bit. And then there is a, a table that lists all of the water rates and. That is part of the IGA. It's one of the attachments and, and will be available to be shared.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay. Um, so I think we've, we've covered the certification strategy. The other driver. That really triggered this coordination, the development of the IGA. Is this supply imbalance that we were seeing among the partner cities. So, so what we were seeing is that some cities have plenty of water to meet their future demands, such as the city of Tal. You've got lots of additional supply for the future. However, some of the other partner cities aren't in that situation and could be needing additional supply sooner rather than later. And so that creates an incentive for them to go out. And so that creates an incentive for them to go out and get new water rates to meet their projected future demands. But of course, we've already got this traffic jam at the Medford Water Commission's Duff Water Treatment Plant. And we really didn't want to make it worse if we didn't have to. So that created an incentive to do some type of water sharing. Okay? So the objectives of the IGA are to document that certification strategy that we talked about and to develop a framework for the partner cities to share water supply rather than have them go and get additional water rates. Right? So let's talk a little bit more about that certification strategy. The Duff Water Treatment Plant currently has a capacity of about seventy-five CFS. And as we talked about, there's already some water rate certificates at the water treatment plant and there's just not much more additional capacity that would allow certification of water rates without going over that seventy-five and potentially getting water rates tied together. So a strategy was developed to kind of incrementally certify the water rates as the water treatment plant capacity is incrementally expanded. So most of it, I guess, all of the cities' water rates are scheduled to be certificated earlier. And Medford Water Commission's water rates would be scheduled to be certificated at later increments of expansion of the water treatment. Okay? So, Jordan.
Kim, this question might be for Brad. What is Medford Waters Commission's plan for increasing that capacity at water treatment plan or treatment plant, pardon me?
Yeah, Jordan, I'll jump in. So um the first incremental expansion is we're adding twenty uh twenty million gallons per day from a water utility standpoint. We're always talking MGD versus um CFS, but we're adding twenty MGD uh to the existing capacity and that project will be complete by twenty twenty-eight. So come twenty twenty-eight time, we'll be at a spot where we can demonstrate or put more water beneficial use that will then facilitate the certification process that uh Kim is um referring to.
So let me show you that table that I was referring to. This, I think, helps to demonstrate the issue that we've been grappling with. So um as I said, the current capacity of the water treatment plant is seventy-five CFS. And as you can see here, the certificates that are, you know, water rights, they're already certificated, add up to just under sixty-seven CFS. So we're pretty close to having used all of that capacity um to get certificates. I'm sorry, I'm seeing a couple of hands. I'm not sure if those are new questions.
Yes, so mine was a follow-up question to Jordan's and I'm so sorry, I was struggling to find find the function, I'm sorry. My follow-up to question to Jordan's is, uh, thank you, Brad. What are the plans for Duff Two? Are those still in? You know, are you guys still planning and do you have a target for that in the course of the next few decades? What's what's the plan?
Great question, Mayor. Um, it probably would benefit me from coming down and and sharing with your uh city council, you know, what we are doing at the plant in the long-term view, that certainly we've, the concept has changed uh in terms of that we're no longer calling it um Duff Two. What we're doing is we're expanding the existing treatment plan. And so this expansion and the one after really is taking the place of what was historically referred to as Duff Two. And there's a whole bunch of, you know, technical reasons uh for that, but um we do have a comprehensive plan uh that lays out the development schedules associated with Duff uh all the way out past a hundred CFS.
Oh, great. Is that cop plan on the on your website?
It it's not out there yet, but you know, I will make sure that we get Jordan something and or I'll come down and and share in more detail either with you and or uh the rest of the council if if that's desired, so that you guys can understand that in a greater degree.
Oh, great. I I just uh reviewing it would be fine for me. I uh that that is a shift from my old thinking. Thank you very much, Brad.
Kim, mine's more of a math question, you know. I think of talent's water rights in acre feet, not in CFS. Could you tell me a ballpark figure of like how much CFS does talent have certificated?
Oh, Jordan, I was really hoping you weren't gonna ask me that question. Um.
So I can hop a little bit. Uh, so uh it the challenge with comparing it to acre feet is acre feet is not a rate. It's it's a volume. And so that that that's the foundation of why it's difficult to have the math easy in your head. But um an acre foot is um forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty cubic feet. Okay, and so when, but when we talk in a rate, we always talk about that per second or per minute. And so you've you've got to, you've got to multiply that by some period of time in order to convert it to to then compare it to a CFS number. So so that's what makes it hard in your comparison and that's your water right is for the water year and that's the total acre feet as a volume, not as a rate.
Thank you, Brad.
Would help because it's still, it's still hard to understand how that then converts into a rate. Um, but you know, there's math behind it in terms of how you get from an acre foot uh to 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 a to a rate. You just have to have a time period uh to do the math.
Yeah, and the one thing that I would throw in here is a completely non-math answer, which is my favorite kind of answer. Um, and that is that in a way, the rate doesn't really apply to your water rate. And we're in the process of confirming this right now. Uh Ashland is going to be a guinea pig for you. They have a water rate very much like yours that is just a volume. It does not have any kind of rate stated on it. And our expectation is that we're going to be able to certify that right without any reference to the rate used by the other water rates at the Duff Water Treatment Plant, simply because it's volume only and does not have a rate. And so in a way, this this discussion doesn't apply so directly to talent because you're well, we expect, we're still waiting for Ashland's certificate to be finalized, that we expect it to be able to go through simply on the basis of showing the use of the volume without this risk of getting tied together. But with that said, you know, every, all the rate-based water rates, and there are some uh stored water rates that also have rates. They all are in this situation of, you know, potentially getting tied together if we're not strategic. Does that help? Okay. Um. So let's see. Uh, so we've got seventy-five CFS capacity and we've got about sixty-seven CFS of certificates already. And then we've got about a hundred and three CFS of water rates that haven't yet been certificated. They're either in permit status or they're transfers, but any any case, haven't been certified, still waiting. And so you can see that that total of a hundred and seventy CFS is significantly more than the seventy-five CFS capacity. And and that's why we have to be strategic with certificating the rights. Okay? Well, if there aren't any other questions about this certification strategy, I think I'm going to switch now to water sharing. Okay? Great. So before we get into any of the details, I just want to circle back and reiterate kind of the the key, key issues, kind of the foundational issues for developing the water sharing agreement. Um, and and the first one, the one that we heard the most about was that the cities needed to retain their water rights. That that was non-negotiable, you know. That that was front and center. Um, so no one's water rates were to be put at risk. There was to be no impact to the seniority or the value of the water rates. The cities needed to be able to use the water under their water rates to grow and to plan for future uses. And there there needed to be no risk to those water rates. And all the cities needed to benefit from the sharing strategy. So that was kind of the the core nugget to all of this. Um, and so building on that then, um, the cities would share water during this May through September time period that we've been talking about and Medford Water would continue to provide water supply in their water rates in the October to April period. And um one other thing that I just wanted to point out is that it became apparent as we were working on this, that an added benefit of the sharing is that it does create some amount of source redundancy. So a lot of the cities like talent have a single source of supply. Um, often it's like you um stored water from Lost Creek Reservoir. But there are some other cities that got their water rates from irrigation districts and they have completely different sources of supply. So what that means is if, you know, one of these sources became unavailable or or contaminated or or for whatever reason, not usable, um having this ability to share water supply would create some source redundancy for the partner cities. Okay? Let's keep going here. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Kim. Um, this is great, uh very informative. Um, so when you talk about other sources, can you provide us with that information as well? And it's possible that it's in some of the data you provided us and I just can't recall it. So, you know, feel free to uh send me back to some of those some of those sources. But yeah, I'm looking for, you know, what's specifically what cities are using, what water sources. I know Ashland uses watershed and um, so, yeah.
Yes, we have a a water rights table that we can share and it will show you the water sources for you.
That table sounds like the gift that keeps on giving.
I personally love it. Okay, I was making a note. All right. Okay. I'm sorry, was there another question? No, okay. And so let's dive just a little bit deeper into the approach for water sharing. Um. Basically, during that May through September period, the cities just use water. That's it. Just use water. Then at the end of September, Medford Water Commission, who is not going to be involved in water sharing, but who is going to be acting as the managing managing agency, is going to look at the metered water use for each city. So each city has meters and can see how much water was used. And what they're gonna do is they're going to compare the amount of water use metered to the amount of water use authorized by the water rates to see, did a city use more water than is authorized by their water rates or did they use less water than is authorized by their water rates? For any city who has excess use, they use more water than authorized under their own rights. That difference, that additional amount of excess use will get divided up equally among the cities who use less water than is authorized. And the city that used additional water would provide compensation to each of those cities where their water use was allocated to. Yeah, Jordan.
And Kim, clarify for me, because this is I hope I don't have this wrong. Not only, you know, the compensation is fairly minor in terms of the grand scheme of things, but the real benefit is is it looks like we use more water on our water permit than we would have used on our very own. So we have more of a chance to certificate it because another city is using our, okay?
That's exactly right. So that use is allocated to your water rate and you'll be reporting that water use to the Oregon Water Resources Department as use under your water rate. And um, you know, for cities like talent that have a a lot of a additional water rate, um, you know, it can get to be a challenge to show the use of all of that water rate by your development deadline, which I I think it was mentioned earlier, it's about twenty sixty-five. So you you've got time. Um, but the projections were showing that you might not have that much demand from just the city, um even out as far as twenty seventy. So that could be a challenge and the ability to share water could get you there and get you to that that certificate stage that, you know, that you want. So, yeah, really good point. Okay, I do have a simple example that I'll share with you. Um, you'll see, I was very creative here. I used city names A, B, C, and D. And I've just, we've just made up some water rates here. Um, City A has five hundred, acre B, B a thousand and and so on. And then we've created some example waters. Um, the thing to see here is that in our example, City A has used more water than is authorized under their water rate. So they have seven hundred and fifty acre feet of excess water use. And in our example, the rest of the cities have all used less water than is authorized by their water. So what would happen in this very simple example is that the seven hundred and fifty acre feet of excess use would get divided evenly by the other three cities. So two hundred and fifty acre feet would be allocated to each of these cities to be considered use under their water rates. And then City A would compensate each of the other three cities for use of the two hundred and fifty acre feet. Does that make sense? Okay. Great. Well, the next steps are uh to get a final draft of the IGA and The cities and Medford Water Commission are very, very close. To having that final draft. And then that draft is going to be provided to the city councils for review and consideration. The timing for that is expected to be in the April, May time period, so coming up. Yes.
Yeah, um, as I listen to this and read about, you know, the problem, the anticipated drought and and the problems with water looking forward. I'm not seeing much in the way of incentive towards conservation. Or any environmental goals, and I'm wondering how. If we can, we bake those in. If it's even possible in the in this scenario.
Yeah, that's that's a good question. Um, one of the things that has been talked about. And Brad, jump in and correct me if I'm. Not remembering correctly here, I'm I'm not certain that it is, as you say, baked into the IGA. But I. I do recall that the group has talked about coordination. On conservation efforts. So that, you know, conservation would. I think be encouraged and and try to be a little maybe more consistent amongst the various cities. Yes, question.
Kim, if you don't mind, I'd love to just jump on to that one, Council Penomera. You know, it's such a, when I was thinking about this. You know, to certificate our water right, we need to use water. Yet the same time as the city, our values is to save water as much as possible, recognizing our drought. So it's this this odd balance. Something, just an idea that I've been playing around with that I'd love to bring to the council if we decided to move forward with this IGA. Is if whatever funds we receive through a water sharing agreement to dedicate those funds for conservation programs here in in talent. Could be one way that we as talent could to move forward with those values.
And if I could just pile on that, but do we know what this compensation is, is it in any way, you know, significant, or is it just petty petty money?
It's it's not huge dollars. The. The idea of the compensation is that it. Reflects the annual. A cost of the water. So for cities such as talent. You have annual O N M costs for your storage contract and it's based on those O N M costs, so. In the range of twenty three dollars an acre foot around in there. Yes, Madam May.
Thank you, Kim. Yeah, to the same, I to the same point that I think is being made here is just. I mean, I think a conversation we've been having for a while on talent is is, you know, the value of the water rights and and. We really still haven't even gotten that clear of an answer, it seems that, I mean, we've have gotten as close as we've gotten so far. Recently, but. And then whether or not. There is a way to utilize that value to benefit. In either our community or or an initiative that Council Penomera, and these are ideas we've tossed around as a group. That would help with conservation, the thing about conservation, and I haven't looked at the studies in a long time, Brad, maybe maybe they're different now, but. I think five years, maybe it's the last time I really dug in, talent is among the most successful in conservation and and. And, you know, so I I definitely see value in in utilizing those funds for furtherance of of that effort, but also. If there is an opportunity for us to talk regionally about how to how to, I think we're interested in baking it into the agreement. That on some level, you can't help but feel when when you're the holder of all the extra water rights, and I know that there are others that have some too, but. That utilizing those water water rights to ignite. Better use of water, you know, to share our water rights with a caveat of of asking for better use. Just seems logical if if not even at if if we're not extracting dollar value. For for what I know are very valuable water rights. I I I hope I made a larger point of it. That's it for me.
Yeah, Brad, did you have something?
Well, a couple of things, yeah, I appreciate. The counselor and the and the mayor for bringing up conservation, conservation is. A hugely important value that I think as a region that that we need to work together on and and to do a better job. You know, over time. And so, you know, some recent examples of that is is that we're Medford Water is providing. Conservation services to the city of Ashland and we did that last year. And we supported their conservation program with materials and and efforts in doing work within their service territory and helping train their staff. To do that work. So that's something that we did last year. With IGA and we've talked as a partner group that we're we're willing to help and contribute to other partner cities in a way that we can work together. And and try to be on the same page as it relates to what we're doing across the region with conservation, so. You know, those we've had a lot of conversation there, it's just we felt like. Here, the first step was to get the basic sharing agreement in place. And use that as a foundation to do some of this good work. That's being talked about here tonight, which is great, you know, really great to hear. The other thing I'd point out is is that all every single partner city still has an obligation to submit a water management conservation plan under Division eighty six. And as a result of submitting that plan. You have to show to the state of Oregon that you're doing what are meeting sort of their minimum expectations around conservation, it's not. You could do more, which I would advocate that we do. But just just for everyone's benefit to understand that, you know, every partner city has to submit that and and justify. Those programs to to the state of Oregon.
Yeah, that's a good point. And Brad, I don't recall, did we talk about potentially having the cities and. Medford Water Commission do a joint W M C P at some point in the future?
We we did, Kim, and I, you know, I think it would help economize the efforts that are done by, you know, six partner agencies and around preparing those and. If I, we talked about trying in moving forward to do that jointly, so we just would do one. That would cover all of them and the effort, you know, should be less than everyone having to do their own. So, yeah, it's been it's been discussed. It it's great to hear talent's view of. Of taking the responsibility of something they have, this water right and wanting to use it in a way that is responsible, so I I really appreciate hearing that.
Yeah.
Madam May. Um, you know, Brad, I haven't, it's interesting, I haven't looked at any of those numbers since you became general manager, it's really pre. Pre your employment there and, you know, hearing that you guys are training in Ashland is 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 really encouraging. I know that Medford's numbers used to be really, you know, show pretty poor performance in the state in general and. And that suggests to me that under your leadership, things are getting better in Medford, I'm glad to hear that. I. I did want to, you know, the question that nags me about this whole thing is. You know, you have to demonstrate that you have enough water to build out. And I know that for, I mean, I was on the the Water Coalition, or now they call the Partner Cities. I was on the Water Coalition when some of the cities were really concerned that they couldn't expand. They couldn't expand their growth plans based on their 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 future water. So what happens? And you may have explained this, and I just am not connecting the dots, what happens when they grow? Based on water sharing and for some reason, you know, we've always talked about how our water rights remain our water rights. But for some reason, we have to pull back or another city has to pull back their water rights. For whatever reason, yeah, I don't even know if that's even even a likely scenario. But but didn't, you know, if is there a situation that we should talk about where a city might outgrow? Their own water rights based on a sharing plan and how that might impact them if there was ever a scenario where where that had to be redistributed, is that, has that been talked about ever?
Yeah, Kim, maybe I'll jump in and on this one. You know, a very astute point in terms of. You know, we, yeah, we have had a number of conversations and it really relates to a downstream IGA. From what we're talking about here, Mayor. And and the reality is is that, you know, this is the foundation of a recognition. That we have to plan as a region to secure water supply. And and we need to have autonomy, each said each partner city needs to have their autonomy. In doing that, but that doesn't mean that we can't collectively plan for for the future and that this phase one IGA is the first step in that direction to to build that trust and that relationship around sharing what we have now when it's easy. And trying to use that knowledge and information and and trust to build something that. Helps us when it becomes harder, and you're talking about the point when it becomes harder. And, you know, what I would just throw out there right now as it relates to that is is that. You, all of the partner cities are getting surplus water from Medford Water now. And when we use that term surplus. What Medford's view of that is at this point is is that we have to plan. To have surplus in order to help serve the region. And that's the backstop. As we move forward is is that if one city starts to grow a lot, then. We either need to work together to do that and or that city has to. Determine that they've got an alternative way to deal, you know, with that issue, and I think that's where the partnership, you know. There's still a lot of work to do to get to the point of being able to handle that situation, but there's also been a lot of conversation about it.
Thank you, Brad.
And I do want to share that we only have about. Couple minutes left here before we'll have to switch gears into city council mode. I do want to share with Council, Kim has really kindly offered to be a source of information if you have any questions around water rights or what they mean or how they work. Feel free just to come to email me and then I can connect you to with a phone number. For especially for those folks to, and then new to the water rights jargon.
Yeah, thank you, Jordan, I'd be more than happy to do that. That's what I had for you tonight. Happy to answer any other questions, but that is the end of my presentation.
I have one. So the IGA is incoming, April or May. And we'll be making a decision as a city on our participation presumably at that time. So when will we see a draft of it? I I I expect that it's going to be a lot to digest and that there's, I I I I'm guessing I'm going to have a lot of questions about it, so I want to give staff ample time. To and and the Water Commission ample time to gather any any answers, you probably already have most of them, but. Yeah, I think I made my point there.
Jordan, I may, I'll jump in and provide what I'm thinking here. So actually tomorrow, our Partner City Group meets Thursday of each month, and we've been doing that now for quite some time. But we're reviewing really sort of the final draft and the intention is is once we get, you know, at at sort of what I'll call the staff level, once that concurrence is there that we've sort of. Feel comfortable and that should, I would expect that that would probably come after tomorrow's meeting, that we're at a point where we could absolutely work with Jordan and. The other city administrators to circulate. That 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 agreement with, you know, with with the electives to help. You know, get going on reviewing and understanding it before it comes up for approval.
Thank you, Brad, that's great.
And and I'll just say on that point. You you all are lucky to have Jordan be in the role that she's in, she has been fantastic to work with and and. And drinking through a fire hose in terms of coming up to speed because a lot of this work has been going on, you know, before her time and. Her leadership has been instrumental in in moving us forward, so thank you, Jordan, for that.
Thank you, Brad, right, right back at you and the team, really put a lot of effort in to get me up to speed, so thank you.
I'm gonna add, with all due respect, Brad, you are singing to the choir. All right. Are there any other questions or comments before we? Take a few minute break probably before we go into council meeting, huh? All right, well, I want to thank you both for coming, I'm sorry, my camera's off, but I I do have my dinner in front of me, that's that is the truth. So thank you so much for coming, this has been very informative and we really appreciate this long walk up to this big, big decision, water rights are probably going to be the big, one of the biggest issues in our future. And to be able to be incrementally brought through the process and 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 really, you know, just educated on on how this all works, Kim, I want to just thank you for coming back and. And taking us through it again, it really helps us make informed decisions and it's really what we value.
Good, I'm very happy to be here.
Thank you, good to see you again, Brad. So with that, this meeting is adjourned and should we all take about three minutes or so before we go to council?
That sounds great. Okay, reminder to everyone that this will be the same link, so go ahead and stay logged in.